We ready? Six o'clock.
Oh, I'm all right.
All right. Thanks for coming, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
Let's lead this in to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
All right, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Anything, Paul, to add or change? Nope, corrections, Dan?
Add them.
Nope, okay. Tim, anything you've got?
I've got that one add there for you, Mr. Mayor, the Manorville Restoration Gambling Permit under A two F.
Okay. And then I've got one under J two, under the Engineers Report. We're going to add D and R Trail Grant Receipt. Dan will update us on that new grant. That's all I've got. With that, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, to have a second.
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Under the Consent Agenda, questions or comments for administration on the Consent Agenda? Entertain a motion for approval?
I like the motion.
Thanks, Dan. Second?
Second.
Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Visitors, first up is Rolling Hills Transit, if you'd like to come up. You should have received a handout. If not, everybody got one, then I can give you mine, too. You go, Dan.
I think I have one.
All right, well, that.
I thought I brought enough. Last night I didn't bring enough. Tonight I didn't bring enough. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come in and speak today. One of the things I'd like to do is come a little bit more regular to your council meetings, hopefully once a year, to kind of give you a report on what's going on in your public transit. Not sure kind of where you're at, so I'll start at the beginning. My name is Bill Smitscher. I'm with the Rolling Hills Transit, SEMCAC Transportation, Director of Transportation, right next door. It's very convenient. I love this council meeting because it's just a short little walk right on over. So I'll start a little bit about with in your packet, in your folder, kind of give you an idea of what public transit is. So this little graphic right here kind of shows you the layout of the state of Minnesota and the different transits. So we are part of a huge network in the state of Minnesota that has a number of different public transits outside of the metropolitan area and also the little regional areas like Rochester and Mankato. The one thing that I also like to show is if you take your little rider's guide here, that's this little guy right here. This kind of shows you what our service area is in the southeastern Minnesota. So we provide public transit for five different counties in southeastern Minnesota. We go all the way over to Caledonia, and of course, this is our western edge of the service area. We provide public transit in 11 of the communities where we have a bus stationed, a couple of the communities such as Cassin. We have two buses that are operating in the facility next door for the city of Cassin and Manorville. And we also have Caledonia that also has two buses. So we actually run 13 routes a day, a daily basis, Monday through Friday. We also service up to 18 different communities within southeastern Minnesota. So these buses don't just stay within those particular boundaries. They go within other certain areas. We have a lot of trips that go from Cassin, Manorville into Rochester that provide services for medical appointments or shopping or what have you. So one of the things that I think is really important to know is that as a public transit, we offer transit for anybody in the community. So a lot of times we get that stigmatism that we only carry students or we only haul individuals that have disabilities. But we basically have the facilities and the infrastructure to handle transportation for public, anyone that's in the community. We do travel within your community for $2, so it's a $2 run for anyone that wants to ride from here to there with the city of Cassin. If you want to journey down into Manorville, it's an extra buck, so it's three bucks for that trip. And if you're going to journey into Rochester, it's a $6 trip into Rochester. Those are all one-way fares. We try to keep the fares as low as we possibly can. We are subsidized by the Minnesota Department of Transportation. In fact, I'm writing the 2025 grant rate as we speak. So 95% of our funding comes from MNDOT. The reason it's at 95% is because of COVID-19. We anticipate that we're going to go back to an 80/20 split. That's what we were just before COVID-19 hit our area. So we do look for communities like yourselves to help us generate those extra funds, those local match dollars, to help us offset our budget.
Bill, how much are those? How much would that look like?
So right now, the budget that I just wrote was $1.9 million.
Okay. So what percentage of that would you be looking for from Cassin?
So what we were looking at is we're looking at what would be the fairest thing to do. And basically, what we did is we took all the infrastructure that we have that we'll be updating, which is our buses, and just kind of divided that by the 13 different communities. So it looks like about $5,000 a year is what we're kind of looking for. You'll see toward the end of the folder there, a resolution that we're hoping that we can get our communities. A number of the communities that I've visited already have already signed on to doing an annual contribution. One of the things I think we requested was to help us with the buses. We did just get a brand-new bus for the community of Cassin. You can see that picture. It's on the back of our new building that we're also looking at doing for the future. So that bus cost us about $93,000. Our local match was about $15,000. So what we're kind of looking at is we're kind of looking at our communities to help us with that infrastructure. Now, that was one of the cheapest buses. The bus that I just purchased two months ago was $143,000, and the bus that I'm going to be ordering in the fall is $239,000. So just for your comparison, the buses that we took delivery in December were $93,000. The buses that we're just ordering for 2025 are looking at about $233,000. So quite a bit of money for that infrastructure. We're looking to replace every one of our 13 buses within the next few months. I might as well just go right into the building. We're looking at expanding this area. This area is growing incredibly, incredibly fast. And as you can see on our little infographic here, just how many people do ride in the community of Cassin. So the first three months of the year, we had 2,721 people that rode in the Cassin-Manorville area. I also got the 2023 stats on there. So for the entire year of 2023, just about 8,600 people rode the buses that we have available for people in this community. Quite a few miles that are driven. Most of our buses right now had averaged about 190,000 to 200,000 miles. So we're slowly replacing those buses. We replaced three in December. We're replacing three in May, and then we got three more coming in December. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have at this point. I know that I, first of all, want to thank the council for being so generous. We had a water softener malfunction a few months back where we went through a few gallons of water. I believe it was like 75,000 gallons. It was incredible. So we probably emptied one of your water tanks just by that water leak. So thank you very much for your gracious consideration on that one. So we appreciate that. I do have two stories to tell in conclusion, just to kind of show you the value of this. I did sit in your seat, Mr. Mayor, over in the city of St. Charles for 10 years. And one of the things that I did is I cut the public transit budget. So I think this is kind of my penance to come back and share some of the stories.
We're going to cut it tonight?
I will say that I did reinstate it after we found out, you know, what the value of that was to the community. And I think one of the reasons that I did cut is we didn't have anybody that liked myself coming into the council and kind of sharing the benefit and the stories that go along with public transit. So one of the stories I'm going to tell is, like I said, probably my penance here. So in 2015, I retired from my full-time job. I was a deputy sheriff for 31 years. I went to work with Rolling Hills Transit as a driver. And one of my first customers was an individual that was disabled. And she got on the bus, and we took her to her appointment in Rochester. She was telling me that it costs her $100 to get to her medical appointment under the normal transportation. Just to give you an example, it's $12 for Rolling Hills Transit to give them a ride there. So we help an incredible amount of people that we just don't think about. The other story I'm going to tell you real quick is from a community not too far away, Stewartville. I had drive, was driving there and ran across this elderly lady that was going to the nursing home quite often every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. She would go to see her husband. And the reason that she used the Rolling Hills Transit is because she lost her driver's license many years ago voluntarily. She just didn't feel comfortable driving. So the benefit is that she was able to go have lunch with her husband for four hours those days of the week. So individuals like that, it's really important to have this public transit. I know I'm a very fortunate person. Maybe some of you are as well. I have two vehicles sitting in my garage at my disposal. I can go anywhere I want, anytime I want. But a lot of times, the people that we serve do not have that same opportunity. So it's with the gracious of the city councils and other individuals that keep public transit going. So I want to say thank you on behalf of Rolling Hills Transit. So I'll open it up for any questions that you may have at this time.
So for the folks with special needs, the rate is the $2, $3, or $6? Or are there any programs through you where they can get subsidized on that? Or do they have to do that on their own?
Yeah, so we do offer other services through SEMCAC Transportation. One's the Volunteer Driver Program where they would get the reduced rates. These are established rates. That's one of the deals that we have to abide by with the state of Minnesota. We have to have an established rate for everyone across the board. But we do have other services that are available at SEMCAC that would allow that. And we try to keep those rates as low as we possibly can, and that's one of the reasons that we need, obviously, the subsidy.
Thank you.
Yep.
You guys are used quite often, too, for preschool students that are morning or afternoon here in town?
Yeah, actually, our biggest customers in the community of Cassin is preschool students and other students and also the seniors. So those are our two bigger ridership. One of the things that I'd really like to do is to try to get back into the commuter traffic because I come in from St. Charles every day, and I see that long line of cars that are heading out of Cassin Dodge Center. And one of the things I'd really like to capture, recapture, because I know that you did have this at one point, was a commuter service that took people into Rochester. So one of the things that we're looking at with the existing personnel that we have is to try to increase our operation from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. With those hours, we could easily do commuter traffic. So that's one of the things that we're really, really working hard to try to get that for this fall so individuals could utilize that service. We'll probably be having quite a few conversations with you guys on that.
Yeah, well, I think that would be used. I think it'd be a big plus if we could get some people who could carpool or kind of go into Rochester, so.
Yeah. Appreciate that. The one last thing is on the document that had the resolution, sample resolution, or 10 Reasons Why Public Transit is Important. See if you can find it there. Maybe you can find it. But just right here, this is the document. This is a great thing to just kind of look at. You know, there's other things that public transit offers and benefits the community. So I'd encourage you to just take a look at those as you're looking through the information. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we're just next door if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's right.
Okay, audit presentation is next. This is the most exciting time of the year.
There's some.
Hey, you know, it is. It's a culmination of a lot of manors that go into this, so. And I would be remiss if I didn't, first off, just thank Jessica Gunnison in our office, who put a lot of time in. Her first audit this year did a really good job, did the best she could, anyway, and I think a really good job working with Riley and the staff from Smiths Mayor's. So really a big shout-out to her and a big thank you to her for all of her work.
Thank you.
All right. Where's yours?
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jason Boynton. Mr. Smith Schaefer, pleased to be here this evening to review the results of the audit of the city of Cassin for 2023. As Tim mentioned, I did want to recognize Riley is here, actually not in the capacity of Smith Schaefer. He's one of our employees, one of the leads on the Cassin audit. He's actually here as a citizen of Cassin this evening. Has he had an agenda item on there? But pleased to be here with the council again, as I said, to review the results of the audit for 2023. The housekeeping, here's the actual financial statements. We issued an opinion on the financial statements. That's the scope of our work, of our purpose. And then I've got a PowerPoint here as well that I'm going to use to guide through the presentation. And I think they've got it up here, and you're going to advance the slides for me. I'll try and give you a clue every time. All right, starting out, summary of the audit. So we issued an opinion on the financial statements. It's an unmodified opinion. A lot of people refer to it as clean opinion. Just means that we think that the financial statements, as are presented here, are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. I'm not going to go through these financials in detail. We had the opportunity to sit down with staff to review those back in earlier this June. But the information I'm presenting here after the summary of the audit is information that comes directly out of the financial statements. And it's kind of highlights of the activity for '23 for Cassin. So we will look at that. In addition, issuing an opinion on the financial statements, we're required to do some work around legal compliance. This is making sure that the city is complying with state statutes for cities in the areas that they are required to. We don't have any exceptions to bring to council's attention in that review. We do issue a couple of letters. One's a management letter that goes over control-related matters. We have two comments there that we've had in the past. And frankly, we don't anticipate that those are going to change. Segregation of duties, and we prepare your financial statements in accordance with GAAP and all the required footnotes. So we stay up on the standards. We don't expect city staff to do that. And so don't expect, anticipate that they're going to change, but we are required to remind you each year that those are out there. And then lastly, there's an auditor's responsibility letter. It just goes over what our responsibility is. As I said, we're doing a financial statement audit. That's what we're here, or that's what we're performing. As well as it goes over if we had any issues or problems or concerns, we're required to put that in writing to the council, which we did not for 2023. So that's a quick summary of the audit. Any particular questions before I launch into kind of financial highlights? All right. So the first chart here, Chart Three, takes a look at your taxable tax capacity. We put this in here just to kind of give a flavor for what is going on with the community. We did see a pretty significant increase from '22 to '23 in our taxable tax capacity. Now, a lot of that is just market value gains on properties, right? The cost of housing has gone up pretty dramatically, and that's increased every, all the boats are rising in that particular area. But we did see a 22% increase. We have about $6.8 million taxable tax capacity.
Before you move on, do you mind, what is the class rate and how is it determined?
The class rate, well, that's based on the type of property.
Right. So you kind of average out whether it's a residential or--
Residential, homestead, commercial, it's all based on that.
And that's averaged out over the city, and that's how you get to these numbers?
Yeah, so this would be every property times its market value, times its class rate gives you the taxable tax capacity. So the state actually calculates it, or the county calculates it, and we get the number from there, so. All right, we're going to start out with then revenues of our governmental funds. So our primary revenue source is property tax collections, which is on Chart Five. We collected for the year just under $4 million. That's about a 3% increase. I think the levy actually was up about, we had a 4% increase from '22 to '23. So we get about a third of our revenues from property tax collections to help fund operations, at least for 2023. You can see at the levy, we did have increases primarily in the debt levy. We saw a little bit of an increase in the general fund, in EDA fund levies for '23 compared to the previous year. Next chart looks at tax increment revenues. So I include this in here just to remind council that these are special districts, taxing districts for the specific purposes of that project. And so these dollars are all coming in for that purpose, $152,000 in 2023. But also a reminder that once that TIF district has served its purpose, then those dollars come back on the general property tax rolls of the city. LGA is our second most significant revenue source, Chart Seven there. We saw a 2% increase from $1,226,000 to $1,252,000. And this year, we had about 10% of our total revenues came in through LGA. And then the last revenue chart we have on Eight, Chart Eight there compares a couple of those items, the tax levy and the tax increments in the LGA. It adds in charges for services, which is in the yellow, and that's going to be things like fees we collect at the pool, for fees we get at the ice arena, fire revenues that are brought in. So that was about $740,000 in 2023. And then we have assessment revenue for assessment projects of about $378,000. So it kind of gives you also a relational feel for where most of the dollars are coming from. We're funding most of our operations from tax levy and then, to some extent, LGA. Flipping gears to on the expenditure side are the outlays of funds. We have some charts on departmental charts on the expenditures. 2023, we spent about a half a million dollars in general government. And that includes in that first bullet there all the things, mayor and council elections, planning, accounting, legal, all those items. In actual dollars, we're actually down about $8,000 from the previous year. And we were under budget by $32,000 in general government. Public safety, we spent about $1.68 million. That's up about 3.6% over the previous year. Of that $1.68 million, we spent about $1.35 million on police, followed by fire of $282,000. And then building inspection was $46,000 in 2023. Spent a little under half of our expenditures in public safety of all of your governmental expenditures. Chart Twelve looks at your public works, so street and alley, engineering, snow and ice removal, street lighting. Expenditures in '23 were $533,000, down from $574,000, so we were down about $41,000. We had a little less in repairs and maintenance and engineering costs in '23 compared to '22. Chart Thirteen is your culture and rec. So this is going to be all park activities, our rec program, swimming pool. The ice arena is included in there as well. Our expenditures for '23, you can see we're down slightly. At $1.44 million was the total, down about $32,000. So if you break that down, about $320,000 is spent on the pool, $329,000 on parks, about $450,000 in library, and then $278,000 on the ice arena. Within that group, I just mentioned library, where we spent $450,000. You can see that that was up about 5% over the previous year, $427,000. And then that last bullet there talks about health insurance, which was a little bit higher in '23 as well as media purchases or book purchases. Chart Fifteen then looks at your, all your expenditures that we just talked about. So your general government in the first column, public safety. So again, relationally, you can see we spend a significant portion of our dollars in public safety as well as in culture and rec. A couple of areas that we didn't have separate charts on was health and welfare, which is relatively small. If you go back to 2020 and, or I'm sorry, 2019, 2020, we had flood recovery in 2019. We had COVID-related expenditures in 2020. But the last few years, we've had relatively minor amounts. We added the cemetery in 2022, but spent about $28,000 there. And then the last column is TIF and economic development, which is going to be our EDA expenditures, our tax increment expenditures, and our administration of the Small Cities Grant. So that's revenues expenditures. I've got a few charts here on fund balances for city funds. The first one is the general fund balance. That increased, we did operate at a surplus in the general fund in 2023. So that increased our unassigned fund balance from $3.1 million up to about $3.5 million. And as a percentage of our expenditures, you can see total expenditures in the general fund were down slightly from, compared to 2022. We're at about 74% of expenditures for 2023. I'm sorry, 74% of next year's budgeted expenditures. That's the metric that we look at. You can see the policy in that second bullet. We tried to maintain in that range of 40% to 60%, so you can see we're above that. One item to note for the current year, we did get some one-time dollars from the state for public safety aid. You probably recall that. And so those dollars are actually sitting in that fund balance. I think we spent a portion of them, but we still have some to spend that will occur in 2024 as well. So that was part of that increase overall in the general fund, unassigned fund balance. Moving on from the general fund, library, their fund balance ended the year $302,000, up from $77,000. We did get a large donation in the library, just under $200,000, which brought that fund balance back up. We used it last year in capital purposes at the library, which brought it down. But we're back up to where we were basically in 2021. Chart Nineteen is the EDA fund balance. At the end of the year, they had a surplus of $19,000. At the end of the year, it's just under $140,000 in the EDA fund. Chart Twenty, we have our financial assistance fund. That fund balance was $239,000, actually has about $173,000 in cash. And then we have loans to collect back, then of about $66,000, which makes up those two components of the fund balance. And then we have a revolving loan fund as well, which is on Chart Twenty-One. Their fund balance is up slightly at $157,000. And again, like the financial assistance fund, there's about $65,000 up there still in loans to collect back. Next chart looks at the outstanding bonds for the city. There's three larger ones. The first one is the 2017 A bond, and that was for the street project that we did, which I think covered second, Street Southwest, third, fourth, and fifth Northwest. We're paying that down. We owe about $4.7 million on those bonds at the end of '23. And then the far right there, you can see the 2022 A bonds, which was the Highway 57 Improvement Water Tower projects. We started paying down principal in '23 on that. We owe $5.8 million. And then we issued the '23 bonds for the public safety building, $7 million balance at the end of '23. The next chart, so unlike the bonds, which we have to pay back, county standards require us to book an estimate of what your liability is for participating in the state pension plan, in PERA, which is Chart Twenty-four there. So basically, we have to record, they do an actuarial study every June, and they require us to record on our financial statements, our pro rata share based on what we contribute to the pension plan for our employees compared to what everybody else contributes. But what we've seen here from these actuarial studies that are done each year, they can definitely be impacted by changing market performance on the assets they have as well as the assumptions that they use to calculate the liability. But just for informational purposes, that last bullet there, they think, based on their last actuarial study, that they're 83% funded in the general employee fund and 86% in the police and fire fund, which is what that PEPF is. Chart Twenty-five, beyond the state pension, we do have the Cassin Fire Relief Association, and they do have a balance. And because of our relationship with them, we are also required by standards to include that. And that was $68,000. That's down from the previous year of $109,000. Chart Twenty-seven looks at our stabilization fund or CAP project reserve effectively. Basically, the excess dollars that we didn't spend in the general fund each year is getting transferred over here, set aside for future use. We ended the year with about $1,007,000 in there, up from $1,004,000 the year before. So we were up about $330,000 from '22 to 2023. We'll finish up then with utility funds. Chart Twenty-nine looks at, in this chart, you've got in the first column, in each year, you've got your revenues, so what we charge to our customers, to the citizens of the city. Expenditures is the next column. We break it up between operating in the dark color, which is actual cash outlay for costs, employee costs, and all supplies and all those things. And then depreciation, which is a non-cash charge, writing off fixed assets that we've already paid for. And then non-operating income, and then the overall income or losses in the last column. So for, and the next couple of charts you'll look at will all look similar to that. We did see an increase in revenues in the water fund. We had a 4% rate increase, but also '23 was a, usage was up. That was a drier year. Expenditures were about $800,000 in total, so we netted a surplus in the water of about $200,000. When you look at Chart Thirty then, this is balance sheet highlights, which is basically just cash and your outstanding debt of the fund. So you can see we added debt in water as part of the 2022 project with the water tower and then their share of Highway 57. So that's in the lighter color, and then your cash balances are in the darker blue there. Cash actually came down, but we did spend about $300,000 in capital expenditures, basically wrapping up that water tower and Highway 57 project. Chart Thirty-One looks at the wastewater plant treatment fund. Revenues this year were $2.28 million, which is up about a little over 3% overall in revenues. We did have a rate increase in wastewater as well. Expenses were pretty similar, $1.7 million. So we had a surplus spend of about $750,000. And if you look at their balance sheet, their cash balances did increase, actually by about $860,000. They ended the year at $4.1 million, and then their outstanding bonds is at $3.9 million roughly in 2023. Chart Thirty-three looks at the electric fund. Revenues, first column again, were $5.25 million. Our expenses were $4.5. We had a surplus of just under $900,000 in 2023 compared to more of a break. We had a surplus of just under nine hundred thousand in twenty twenty-three compared to more of a break even year in twenty twenty-two. And chart thirty-four, their cash balance, one thing you'll notice, electric doesn't have any outstanding debt, so they have cash reserves. So with that surplus that we ran, we did see an increase in cash balances, up to six point one million dollars. Dropped last year, but we spent about four hundred and eighteen thousand on capital-related matters in twenty twenty-two. Next up is stormwater. Revenues were five hundred and nineteen thousand, just up a little bit. Our expenses were about the same. We had a surplus of two hundred and forty thousand. And then that added to their cash balance. Again, no debt in stormwater fund either. So chart thirty-six, we have nine hundred and thirty-one thousand cash reserves. We'll fit in stormwater at the end of twenty-three. And then lastly, liquor fund. So the operating revenues, that first column is the net revenues. So that's basically what we sell the product for minus the cost of the product. So that's what we net. Our next column is our operating expenses, and then the last column is the surplus. So for this last year, we netted about the same, about three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Our operating costs were up a little bit at three hundred and nine thousand. We ended up with a surplus then of about fifty-five thousand for the fund. And if you go to chart thirty-eight, no debt in the liquor fund as well. But even though we operated a surplus, our cash balance did come down because we spent about four hundred and eighty thousand in capital expenditures in twenty-three. Last chart, just a quick summary. So we did see a four and fourteen thousand dollar increase there. We ended the year at seventy-four percent of next year's budgeted expenditures in the general fund. We're making all our payments timely on our debt, no concerns or issues in our debt funds. Ongoing capital projects, obviously the public safety building. Capital improvement reserves are at one point seven million. Where we have our rates set, water and wastewater are covering our costs, they're adding to our cash reserves as well as electric cash reserves are up. And then liquor continues to show consistent operating results each year. Income has been pretty similar, but we did use some cash reserves in that fund for their capital projects. So that is a quick summary of the highlights of the financial statements. So with that, I'll open it up, see if anybody has any questions or want to go back and look at any particular slides.
Table thirty-six, the stormwater doesn't have any outstanding debts either?
Does not.
Paul, anything else? Thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks to the council for working with Smith Schaefer. Appreciate it. Thank Tim and Jess and the team for working with us. Audits can be a little bit disruptive, so I appreciate the effort that they put in, so.
Well, I just want to say thanks to Ms. Schaefer. And then, like I said, Jessica, she put a lot of time in, so I really appreciate it. So thanks very much. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution in the packet, accepting and filing the external auditor report. On the audit is the city's financial statements for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve the audit.
Ryan, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public forum, Joe.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize for addressing you under the public forum tonight. There was some miscommunication in the agenda, so I didn't get on there. So a couple of things that I needed to discuss with the council tonight. And I'd like you to ask questions and hopefully take some action on it tonight. The relief association for the fire department's been in works with Tony Saker out at events in getting us to run the gambling out there for him. So we would have pull tabs, E tabs, all of those kinds of things. The folks that he had out there, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe it was the Byron Football, one of the football associations in Byron, was out there and is no longer there. So we are in the process of that. With that, and the fact that it's been probably twenty-five years, thirty years since we've run any gaming, there isn't anybody on our department that was up to speed on what is needed for all these and alls of that. So we're in that process. We're going to be submitting our permits and all of that kind of stuff to get our licenses through the state and through the city. What I'm asking for you folks tonight, the Hayfield Commercial Club has been out at events prior to the Byron Football. They're going to be helping us get our stuff all set up, get our guys trained and all of that. So we're on board with what the state requirements are and all of that kind of stuff. What I'm asking is for the council to approve for the Hayfield Commercial Club to go back out to events to sell pull tabs and have that gaming. The other thing that I would like, the city has a, I believe it's eighty or eighty-five percent of the revenue that's made gets donated back within the community, I believe, is what the ordinance says or whatever. In lieu of them assisting us, basically, I would like that, I'd like the council to waive that. They're going to be using that to assist us in getting our equipment and getting us set up and making sure that we're, we've got everything, whether it's, you know, audit people and finance people and all that kind of stuff, all set up. So we're good to go with all of that. So that's basically what I'm here to ask you guys tonight. If there's questions or anything like that, I can do my best to answer those, to tell you where we are currently at in the process, so.
Two questions?
Yeah.
The waiver would be just for when Hayfield Club is doing it, then when you guys take over, then?
Absolutely, we would.
Which would make sense because it's your fire department.
Yes. Yep.
And then two, is there safeguards in place to make sure the money's safe at the location?
Yes, so we would, yeah. So in communication that I've had with the Hayfield Commercial Club, because they were out there for a few years, we would be running the same kind of setup that they had, the same kind of schedule. Our guys would be out there on a weekly basis, checking the machines and pulling cash out. So the only, the only loose cash would be that their bartenders would have when they have to, you know, you have to have cash available for payouts. So, but yeah, other than that, there wouldn't be a store of cash there. We wouldn't want that. We'd want to make sure that we've got our numbers, you know, and our bank accounts are up to date as frequently as possible, so. And our plan is to have two members of the department that are working that, so we're not dumping, you know, that schedule on just one member, so.
How long do you think the transition will take?
It depends on the state. We've got all our?
Six months.
Yeah, six months at the most. I mean, our paperwork's ready to basically submit to the state. But yeah, it's just a matter of them getting that stuff back to us and then ultimately getting that submitted to the city for approval on your guys' end.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
You already took mine.
So they've had four different locals, hockey, football, Hayfield, all you guys. Is there any concern with the role over there?
So hockey left because of the issues that were had. Hayfield left because they were cutting back. That's why they left. They didn't, and they're willing to help us. That's why they're, I know the gentleman that, you know, runs that commercial club, so. That's the only reason they're wanting to come back, and that's why they left, is because they, and I have no idea why. I don't know if it was a, there was an issue between Tony and the other people that were there. I don't know. I know CJ's had several meetings with Tony to kind of walk through and talk about what he wants and what we need and some of that kind of stuff. So we're working through a lot of those details, so.
Is there any way you could contact the previous ones like that just to see if there was any issues of why they left? I mean, instead of just?
Yeah, but I mean, I believe, like I said, I believe it was the Byron Football Association, but I'd have to reach out to them to see if that's who it was.
Why, just because of past issues?
My explanation to Tony wasn't personality, but they didn't see eye to eye on a lot of things.
Yeah. But the other ones, I know, I mean, like I said, the Hayfield Commercial Club, they left because they were cutting back. It just got to be too much because they run two or three other locations. And it's just the one, they just have just the one guy that runs their, all their pull tabs and gambling and stuff. So, and it's a lot, so, especially if you have multiple locations that are busy. So, and hockey left because of the theft, so that happened.
I appreciate you guys going out and looking at something like this to try to increase some revenue. Do you know how much Byron was making the last two years and Hayfield before them?
So the numbers that we've gotten from Hayfield, they're somewhere between eighty and sixty grand a year is what they were, what they were making. So I believe Tony said right around six grand a month.
Is the number that he gave me?
Which is seventy, which is seventy-two, you know, thousand a year, so. But yeah, it's definitely, I mean, it's definitely worth it. It's definitely profitable. It'll definitely help the relief association and ultimately the city in our opinion, so.
Once you have the process down, if you want to go somewhere else or have another location, you'll have?
Absolutely. Yep, and that would be our, that would be our hope, I know, so.
Anybody else?
Do you know roughly how many hours your staff is going to be working on the pull tabs? And I mean, is that a paid?
It will be, yeah. Both of the, both of the members that would be kind of our managers, both of those would be paid positions. They'd get a monthly salary. We haven't, we've talked a little bit about it as a board, but none of that has been set. I would be willing to bet it's, it'll be a couple hours a week, you know. And then at the end of the month, you know, a few more, just because you'll have to get the paperwork, paperwork put together to submit the monthly finances and stuff, so.
Does it have to be someone on the department, or can you have someone staff it outside the department?
We could. We could have someone staff it outside the department. But I mean, right now, we had two guys that were willing to, that, yeah, have the time and have the schedules and had the want to do it. So we, we're going to, we're going to start with that and go from there, so.
That would come out of the?
Gambling.
Gambling fund, not?
Yeah, yeah, it's not a, it's not a city position. It's not a, it's not a relief association position. It's, it would be a separate gaming, checkbook gaming fund. That, all of that would come. And that, that sixty to eighty thousand, that was after all the expenses, so.
Any other questions? No. Okay. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you.
I do have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Need our discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Joe. Onto committee reports. Update from P and Z Committee Discussion on Fence CUPs.
Sure. So at the planning commission meeting earlier this month, there were a total of seven public hearings held for fence conditional use permits. So I think to date, that is the highest number that we've had a single meeting. Of those seven, the planning commission did recommend fives for approval with just the standard conditions that were of the access agreements and acknowledgement of any easements that may be applicable to each request. And those were included on the consent agenda tonight. However, two out of the seven public hearings were a bit more non-routine. Basically boiled down to a few different issues. With the first one, there was the instance where the fence had already been constructed before a conditional use permit had been approved by council. And because the fence was constructed right up against an existing fence, that creates some issues with maintenance. But beyond that, I did meet with the property owner, the neighbor property owner, and she had some serious concerns about allowing her neighbors onto her property in order to maintain the fence to begin with. So that was, that was one of them. And the second one, there were also some opposition from the neighbors with that particular fence request. That one was Mr. Norrie. The council is familiar with some of the concerns that he has raised with the ordinance itself, the access agreements requirement, all that sort of thing. So because of the controversy with those, the planning commission did table those ones for a future meeting date. So those will be coming back to planning commission at some point. Any further discussion about the ordinance regarding fences itself? That could be something else that could be looked at. Just looking for some guidance from council tonight and how to proceed with this.
Any questions? The only thing I could think of was, you know, we had picked a three foot off the property line. But I was looking, the closest you could get would be two foot if you had a walk, walking mower, because most of them are going to be twenty inch. So I don't, that'd be about the only change. And I don't know if one foot is going to matter.
Is that because of how big the cable boxes are and launcher boxes in some backyards? They have to open them and need enough space to work? Is that why we picked three feet?
No, it's because of mowing.
Because of mowing?
So you can maintain them on the other side of the fence.
The launchers fall into the category of you're putting it in a needs.
Okay. At your expense.
Yeah.
But I mean, in the past, I mean, we've looked at it and over thirty-some have been okay with putting them on a property line. If you want it on your property line, I still agree that we need that agreement because that's what's going to protect the neighbors. If you don't, you have the option of putting it in the three feet, and you can still maintain it. That was kind of what?
Any feedback? You've talked to Mr. Norrie a little bit, but?
Yeah, I disagree with his position that as written, the ordinance is, you know, cumbersome. I think there, because he's asking permission to put the fence closer, it's more reasonable to ask him to get permission from the surrounding property owners than to force those property owners to show up at a meeting to object. I think that, I don't think there's any problem with the constitutionality of the ordinance. And I think it's fair as written. I wouldn't suggest any changes. Understanding he doesn't like it.
You know, I mean, certainly staff's open to taking a look at it. You know, I think, you know, we talked with Brad Schiavola about it, you know, our contract planner. And, you know, he's got some good feedback. And so one thought I've had was maybe we can, we can review it a little bit more and talk about it planning and zoning and see if there's anything they want to tweak. But I mean, I think, you know, the city attorney's right in terms of, just because you disagree with something doesn't mean that you're right and everybody else is wrong. But, but I mean, I'm always open to whatever the council wants to do. If we want to take a look at tweaking some things, I'm certainly, you know, whenever we make a change to the code, it's to try and fix a problem. In this case, we did fix the problem that we were having before. And now, you know, for at least one person, it's creating a different difficulty for him. So, you know, I know you and I have talked about it, and we're certainly willing to look at it at a staff level and talk to planning and zoning in July. But that's up to the council.
Kind of a planning and zoning to make a recommendation to council?
Well, sure, if you want us to take it back to them, I guess is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know, what are you asking council tonight?
Is that the action, like us to have the staff move back to planning and zoning, have them? Is that the action, like us to have the staff move back to planning and zoning, have them review it extensively, or were, or what do you, what would you like to do?
Here, we have a recommendation from the city attorney, right, take that back to the planning and zoning, and if you want to review it at the planning and zoning level, that's fine. But I mean, it's probably, we can't really make a decision on anything tonight.
I think, I think it'd be good if, if you guys go through it one more time, see if there's any additional flexibility that could be added into the ordinance to try and reduce the amount of people that are coming in looking for waivers.
Right, and that's probably my biggest thing, it's not about the ordinance itself, I think it's, it's worked just fine for what we wanted to do. I mean, in fact, this is the first issue we've had, you know, over two years. But I think that, that is part of it, seeing the number of CUPs that are coming in, obviously there's demand for it, and there may be, like I said, talking to Brad, there may be some other ways we could make it a little bit easier to utilize. So I mean, that's something we'll take a look at, if that's directly what I go in.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's what I mean, I'll take a look at it, because everything changes, then that affects something else, we've unanticipated consequences you don't know until later. The ordinance has solved, or seems to be so far, the original reason we put it in place. People coming back after property owner changes, and the fence is not on their property, it's on the other property in here, and then people are getting mad because they're tearing somebody's fence down. Those were a lot of major headaches, so, go back, take a look at it, if you think it needs to be tweaked, great, come back with a recommendation, but, let's not create another... I just hate to see if there's like twenty exceptions to the...
Well, it makes sense to me.
Planning and zoning wants to do that, that'd be great.
All right, Ian, that's marching orders for you. Tom's back there too, he's ready, he's all ginned up for July now, you know. He'll probably be on vacation, then he'll pick a good meeting, just get, no, all right, there you go.
Thank you, yeah, and just come back at the next meeting with what you come up with. Sure, good, last chance. Uh, to G1, the cannabis zoning draft ordinance.
Sure, I've got this in your packet, we've talked about it a little bit in the past, with the knowledge that the state's going to be doing that licensing soon, um, we need to set the zoning up for where we're going to allow it. So, to be honest with you, this is what the ordinance is really for, it's not to create more restrictions than we can, because we only have the ability to restrict certain things, which is sort of the, a little bit of the scope of these. You know, we aren't going to be doing the licensing, the state's going to be doing that. And, and Amy Seer from County Health, appreciate that, and I've got a meeting with, uh, with her and some of the other city administrators tomorrow to talk to Dodge County and see if they've got some good feedback, and it sounds like they do, so. Um, basically what we're looking at, uh, just to cut to the chase, is we're looking at restricting the zoning to zones C1, C2, and C3, which would basically be the downtown, core, CBD, uh, central business district, um, then along, pretty much along 57 in that, like, the business area, basically from kind of where the, the auto shop is down to, you know, basically Quittrip, and then that area along where Quittrip is, so highway business and then the, the, the C3. So, those are the zones we're looking at, it'll have some of the similar restrictions, um, that tobacco has, you know, distance from schools, distance from churches, that kind of thing. Um, so anyway, that's basically what we're looking at, and, um, you know, I think, you know, there's going to be some, some more feedback coming from, from the model ordinance and things like that too. So, the idea would be to maybe, um, set it up so that we could have a public hearing sometime this summer, either in July or in August, um, because we know that the state's sort of accelerated some of that licensing now too, for folks with the early grow and, and some of the different groups, so anyway. That's what it is, um, any questions anybody has on that, or any suggestions for other zones they would like to include?
Probably wouldn't include any other zones besides C1, 2, or 3.
I, I assume that's the same as the tobacco and...
That's right.
In my head, this should be a mirror image of the tobacco ordinance.
No, I think it's definitely going to be allowed in those lines, that's absolutely right.
Does Dollar General have a, a tobacco?
They do, and they're in that zone, they're in that highway business zone, so, yeah, so they'd be covered.
Well, they're kind of skipped, we skipped the residential...
Yeah, so Quittrip on the north side there does two, so if they chose to, yeah.
But then Quittrip is too close to those schools.
Right, and in that case, Quittrip, yeah. And I don't know Dollar General, I'd be too, I don't know their distance. I'm guessing they're more than five hundred.
They could sell tobacco.
They could sell tobacco, but, yeah. But then, yeah.
C1, 2, and 3?
That's right.
So you'll bring this back after?
Yep, so we'll have some, we'll have some changes, and then we'll, we'll bring it back for additional review, and probably, like I said, either in July or, we'll look at the agenda in July and August and see what makes the most sense.
Okay, Paul, do you have something else?
Yeah, in this draft, there's, this section, there's a lot of sections, let me scroll back. Oh my gosh, uh, sorry, I'm lost in where this is, but it says, basically this is a list of who cannot get a license, I think?
Sure, and I will say, some of this is going to change, so, I'd say this is an early draft, and there'll be changes coming, because some of those restrictions were more for, uh, before the state put their mandated legislation in place.
Okay.
So they're going to be controlling the actual licensing, what we would do is, we will register the businesses, so, like I said, and Amy brought that to my attention today too, so I appreciate that, um, Paul catching that, we'll, we'll have some changes coming, so I don't judge on this, mostly what I want us to talk, talk about on this is just the zoning part of it, because the actual, there's going to be some enforcement changes and things like that too.
Understood.
Thank you.
Five hundred feet from schools.
The administrators report, I won.
Sure, all right, well, I was able to attend a conference, as you know, appreciate the opportunity to be there, and, uh, kind of got a write-up on some of the things that we looked at, a lot of different things there going on, the world electricity. Um, so, a lot of projects coming for cats in itself. Um, as you're well aware, uh, we're doing an undergrounding project, I think a lot of that information went out in the northwest part of town, with all of the tree damage that we've had over the, basically the last two months, with each storm kind of hitting us from a different direction. One day it comes from the southeast and blows trees that way, and the next day it's from the northwest, so. At some point, we'll just have cut all the trees, uh, down, so no. But, uh, the goal is to start undergrounding so we can eliminate, um, that issue altogether, and especially in some of these areas where it's very densely packed, we have trees that thirty years ago, they were, you know, they were easy to manage, now they're, they're up over the top of lines, they're right in the lines, um, so, it was interesting, that's a problem that a lot of folks are having throughout the country, so. Um, I'll just go through a couple other things here, um, really a big shout out to our staff. I think our staff have been doing a really good job, I really appreciate Public Works and our utilities folks. Um, frankly, and I've got the report here from Dave Rosen about our flows and how it looked at the plant over the weekend. Um, you know, compared to five years ago, I think we did significantly better. In fact, one of the only, you know, communities in the area that didn't have a lot of major flooding. Um, the poor folks up in Manorville, I know they're struggling, they had bypasses in two spots from the sewer plant, which may have helped us a little bit because we were handling all their flows coming in. But I, I really appreciate all the staff work and time, same thing for the electric department, um, you know, Jared and, and Kyle, and, uh, their staff up there, they're doing a great job, um, really getting the electrical system back together. We had the, the rip-off of Gibbs, as everybody probably saw in the newspaper last week. You know, that crushed the lines right here, really could have created dramatic issues, we were, we were down for about six hours. Folks over Rochester were down for twenty-four hours, some of them, and it was tons of them, so. I, uh, just think that I, like I said, have a really good shout out to them, they put a lot of man-hours and a lot of time in there, and, and really appreciate it. Thankfully, some of the work that we're doing, I think on the INI is really starting to, to show a little bit, so. Even when I see the trucks out doing the lining this, this week here, you'll see them driving around town, I'm kind of like, well, yeah, just keep doing, keep doing it, even if it's a little awkward sometimes to get around them. Um, so, yeah, just a big shout out to our staff, did a lot of, a lot of good work in the last two weeks, and I think our, our, uh, our residents know it too, because they know how bad it was five years ago and how much better it was this time, so, appreciate that. Got a couple other things in there for you, um, the forecast from FERC, um, so far, we haven't seen too many issues, there was a, one day last week where we did put out a, a peak energy alert, a lot of that had to do with the damage to the electrical system. It wasn't necessarily the temperature, we were just restricted on where the power could come from. Um, you can see there, in that one item there, uh, Exhibit X1, I've got the, the long-term resource, so. I am working with Compass on balancing our resources, uh, we, over the next five years, a number of our contracts are coming open, as well as the state's increasing their renewable mandate significantly, so by about 2030, um, we're going to have to have a substantially higher portion, fortunately, we have a lot of renewables already in our system, but, um, so. Cost is probably going to go up, um, the cost of solar, um, PPAs, so purchase power agreements, is up from twenty-three dollars a megawatt in 2021, and now it's over fifty dollars a megawatt, so you've looked at the cost of that, and solar is going to become a bigger and bigger part of the portfolio, just because that's the kind of power that's being built, so. Um, so I'm just expecting that, and we're looking at those, um, those things, but I won't belabor it, and you've got those items in your hand there, you can see that. Um, if there's ever any questions on that, I'm glad to, to answer questions if I can. Um, then there's, there's an large summary there and some summaries there from staff, but just again, wanted to thank our staff for doing such a good job and, and really handling a lot of things very well, so. I think that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it. And the news report?
Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, two items, uh, but maybe before we jump in, I'll just maybe piggyback on what Tim said there. Um, Public Works was thinking the flows of the treatment plant were about fifty percent of what they would have expected in previous years, so I think that's a testament to all the INI work that we've been doing, and we're ready to pump and bypass sewer if needed, and I think we actually borrowed our pumps to Manorville because they were bypass pumping.
I saw them there doing it.
I think we went from, you know, having all those protocols and pumps in place to other communities that maybe are not doing as much INI work, um, using our pumps for those communities, I think it's, it's good for the city cats and, uh, to know that, so I think it, uh, it reduces the flows considerable amount, so. Um, yes, and the lining project is wrapping up, and I think that's kind of our last phase of our big push from the INI stuff, I guess short of the flood reservoir, but, uh, that was kind of wrapping up our INI, you know, we've done all the some pump inspections and what, that was kind of the last, last kind of piece of that puzzle, so I think it's more of a evaluate and see how things go here in the next coming year, so. Um, that's good, just want to add that, um, so maybe jumping into, uh, what we have here in the council packet, um, South Water Tower Project, uh, within your council packet is a feasibility report and a letter for your review. Uh, looking for review tonight, obviously discussion, consider a motion to approve the report, um, and then direct staff to get, uh, going on that project, because it is a little bit time sensitive. Um, so let's jump into it, um, we'll go through the report word for word, uh, if you'd like to answer questions, um, or we can get into there if needed, but I'll start on page six there, which is figure number one, which, um, kind of has this hazy, it's the purple haze, we're talking about cannabis tonight, maybe a little fitting, but, um, um, the purple haze on the north side there shows, um, a water pressure zone that we have now called the northern pressure zone, that's north of Highway 14. Kind of a blue haze or shading south of Highway 14, um, that would represent a southern pressure zone. So as we talked, I think, last month, uh, we have two different zones, we'd raise the pressure about twenty PSI in that south pressure zone, um, so we could have, uh, the needed fire flow, uh, during a fire condition on the south side of town or south side of Highway 14. Uh, kind of hard to see there, but there's a yellow dot there, that's the Egan site, that's what kind of brought this to a head.
That's it.
We've, uh, we've worked with them to, uh, have a preliminary agreement for us to put that water tower via an easement on their property. Um, so that's the yellow dot there, um, they're receptive of that, they, they understand the city's, you know, kind of put their neck out here doing this, and they're willing to, uh, grant us an easement there, so that's where the tower would go. Um, previous tower that we, um, built a couple years ago, the fairgrounds, uh, we were recommending about seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons, we reduced that to five hundred because there was some considerable savings with the idea that we would put a tower south of Highway 14. Uh, so we ran the calc on that two hundred and fifty thousand gallon reduction, that fits kind of this south zone, so that's what we're recommending within the report. Um, and that'll give us just a big picture equivalent population of about fourteen thousand people, so we got some, we're building some growth in these towers, towers last a long time, so we want to build them right, um, so that's what we're looking at, um, there. Uh, we did look at developing to the west, so as we develop west into the south and to the east, um, this tower will be able to provide that growth, you know, in the fifty, hundred-year timeline, we looked at that. Um, uh, you can see two crossings on Highway 14, you can see the interchange there in kind of white lines. Uh, we have the east crossing, that green line there is a twelve inch, and then there's a six inch along the west side, so that serves everything south of Highway 14, so that helps us, um, kind of isolate that area, because there's only, you know, two loops within the south side of Highway 14, so it's worked out kind of nice that the elevations and the pressure zones are, are going to work, work nicely there. Um, just the tower itself, there, we have an estimate on that, about two point one million, uh, that's about the exact project cost we had in our larger tower, so. We got some escalation in there, but I think we're, we're a little heavy on our estimate, we want, it's easier to come down later, you know, once we get the commitment to move forward. Um, so that in itself is about two point one million. Uh, jumping on to page number seven of the PDF there, figure number two. Um, we looked at, the next two figures, two and three are going to be options to fill that water tower, so we're going to have a water tower to higher elevation, so we got to pump into that zone because our current, um, zone is, is not high enough, so we can't, uh, you know, have towers at different elevations because one will overfill the other one. Um, so this was kind of what I thought was, what I, what ultimately I thought, just, uh, if you would have asked me what was the best option, we're ultimately not recommending this option, again, option number one, um, and that is to pump from the existing wellhouse. Uh, so you can see City Hall there in the upper right-hand side of the sheet, uh, Highway 14 just on the south side of the sheet. Uh, we have a wellhouse on the west side of the sheet there, that little green dot in that little house there. Um, we looked at ultimately having that pump dedicated to our south zone and directly pump via water main, uh, built along Fifth Street, so that's that dotted line, to pump to the twelve inch line that goes south, and that would be part of the higher pressure zone, uh, so that well could pump into that tower directly. Um, we ultimately, um, I'll come back to why we're not recommending that, so about a nine thousand dollar, um, option to run that water line and then replace the well components to pump to a higher elevation. Uh, moving on to figure number three, uh, this is our recommended option to ultimately fill that higher zone. Uh, this is a booster station located here at City Hall, so again, City Hall kind of zoomed in there. Um, little building out back, just, uh, right up over here, uh, we're proposing. Um, power's right there, so power's good, um, then we have water line along Commerce Drive there, um, so that water would kind of suck from the lower level into the booster station, it would be pumped, uh, again, to the twelve inch crossing to pump up into the higher zone, and then, uh, we would ultimately have pressure reducing valves so the water could drain back from the high zone into the low zone if we needed the water, um, in the, um, lower level in town. Uh, that option, we got about a million dollars on that, so it's about a hundred thousand dollars difference, so we kind of call it, well, it's a, it's a cost neutral option because, uh, we're not recommending, um, option number one, um, due to redundancy in the wells, uh, we only have two main wells, and if we take that out of our lower zone, then we got to start talking about well redundancies, um, in case one of our wells goes down and we have to pull a pump. Um, within the booster station, we'll have multiple pumps within that booster station, so if we have to take one down, uh, we can still pump into that zone, so we're going to build the redundancy easily within the booster station. Um, then we will be pumping a lot more water than what we need to in that upper zone, then we use more electricity, so it's probably not going to pencil out. And then we'd look at, um, having to build another well in the current zone, which we don't necessarily want to do because we have enough usage in the lower, lower zone to, to definitely reference the, or need the, the two wells, so. Um, that's the recommendation, add it all up, it's about, uh, three point one million as we're at now. Um, so we're looking at for cost, um, there is a letter, um, also in your council packet, and that is ultimately to the construction company, um, essentially Egan and the construction company that is, um, laying out the city's plans here, um, to ultimately build this booster pump, um, and then references the, the Egan sites, we're kind of, you know, working with Egan as they need something from us to get this, uh, easement, uh, from them to do this. Um, and then ultimately, in the final paragraph there, says the city started design, um, looking at, uh, constructing this by the end of next construction season, which we think is doable, we got to, we got to get going, um, to get, get some things together, um, ultimately plans and be back to the city council with final plan approval at some point as we move forward, probably this fall into winter, so. Um, a lot going on, I didn't want to get too into the details, but happy to if you'd like, um, and may I pause there, Mayor, and ask, see if you guys have any questions.
Questions for Brandon on that, I've got a couple, but I'll, some else go first.
You kind of just skipped over really quickly, um, can you explain why you didn't consider putting a new well next to the water tower or in that south zone?
Yeah, we talked about that, so, um, we did talk about that, um, hopefully, the cost-wise is going to be a wash, um, we just didn't really think that it was going to be advantageous, um, so it wasn't recommended, uh, we did that at a staff level.
So how many existing wells do we have?
Um, two plus one on emergency backup, so.
Well, one of your concerns in here was not having a redundant well, so it seems like that would kind of help that, because then we'd have three wells within emergency?
Well, we also wouldn't have redundancy in the higher zone, right, let's say we put a well, um, at it in our high zone at that location, uh, what happens when we pull that well, we don't have the way to booster into our zone anymore, so we'd be backed down to the lower level. We would not have the redundancy in the higher zone.
How long, if the well, the high pressure well was offline, um, how long will you maintain pressure with the water tower before it goes down to north side pressure?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on growth, as we grow, then that concern becomes more and more, right, because we have more usage. Um, it would probably be a half day to a day, um, so I don't know whether you're probably going on that, well then, let's just plant an outage and fill the tower up and then pull the well and fix it. Uh, but within the booster station, you're going to have, you know, two or maybe even three pumps in there, so if one had pump had to come out, uh, we could use the other pumps to pump into that booster station.
Couldn't we just have a backup pump for the well and just replace it with an epidemic?
We don't, I don't know of any communities that do have a backup well there, you have, you know, everything is...
I mean, we could install three to have redundancy, or we could just have a backup, and it just seems, to me, it seems like it might be cheaper to have a backup than to have three always hooked up, because if we have a whole, you said a half day or whatever, I don't know if that's enough time to replace a well pump like these, but, just...
Yeah, it's usually a day or two, you know, by the time you find the problem, then you got to call them and have an emergency repair.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like, okay, we're going to put in two or three pumps, you know, now we've got three pumps to maintain instead of one bigger pump, which is what you said, right?
Yeah, other than these pumps are pretty simple, right, we have a pipe coming to a small building, and then you got pumps there, and then it pumps out, you know, boosts the pressure as you pump.
And then, what about the capacity of the water tower, so, um, you're not concerned with the capacity of our wells, right? As we grow south, but this water tower is a quarter million, was that what it was?
Yep, two hundred and fifty thousand.
And that's going to be good for growth?
Yep, so equivalent population's about three thousand, so I just kind of roughed it in there, you know, if that develops to the east or the south. Uh, we can't go too far south because then it falls off and starts... We can't go too far south, because then it falls off and starts draining into the south, we'd have to have a pretty big lift station to open up that sewer area, but just kind of looking at our growth pattern, it fits in size-wise with our future growth pattern. To the west, which is just off the sheet, and then to the east, that farm field there, and then kind of doubling the size to the south was on our comp plan. So, we went to actually the comp plan and said, what's our growth goals, what is our growth area? With one caveat, that we don't have a really heavy water user. We don't see a lot of those happen, but just say there was a-
Well, that area does have more industry zoning in that area, right? So, obviously, the whole reason this is coming up is because Egan's going in, right? So, what if somebody else comes in next Egan, another industrial user, is that going to run out our, our capacity that we're planning for faster than we hope?
If it was a water user, Egan likely is not going to be a heavy water user, right? Their manufacturing stuff is-
Okay, yeah, so they're-
But, if we had like a-
It's because of pressure is the reason we're talking about this.
Yeah, they're more pressure and airflow.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
But, if we had a heavy water user, say like a bottling company or something that was using a lot of water, then that's one of the issues whenever you have a big water user coming in, is how do we serve them? Not anticipating that, because we don't see a lot of that, really. It's just not really seen in our industry, but something that we always hold out there as a, as an issue whenever you have heavy water or sewer user. But, again, it's equivalent population of 3,000, and, you know, we do have our manufacturing community and, you know, south fork, there's some people out there, and obviously QuickTrip's probably a heavy water user with the car wash there. But, really, that kind of fit, kind of the area, you know, I think it was 100 acres down there times three people per acre, yeah, equivalent to 3,000 population is kind of what I just envisioned, so.
Yeah.
So, we're looking at.
And since there's only one water tower in that zone, if the water tower needs to be taken offline, there's nothing we can really do about maintaining pressure, it'll just have to go down for a while until the water tower's back available.
Yeah, that's actually another reason that the booster stations are a better solution than the well, is because those booster stations, we can turn them down, pump them slower, so we can pump within that zone and not have that bounce within a tower, but we can still have it pressurizing the system as we're at constant demand, where when we fill the tower, they'll turn on, fill the tower, shut off, and rest.
So, are those booster pumps like fundamentally different? Are they designed to be running more often? Because well pumps are-
Yeah, well, pumps run at a constant flow, so well pump turns on, it fills the tower, shuts off for a half-day, then they turn back on depending on your system.
Right.
So, these, we run off of VFD, where we can slow the spinning of the pump down to slowly fill it. It's not as efficient, but it can be done, so we'll have that within the controls of the booster station.
Yeah, because if a well pump ran that long, it'd burn itself out or something, right?
Uh, we want to be-
They're designed to shut off a lot, right?
Yeah, they're made to run a certain amount of time and then shut off, yeah.
Is there any way in the design of the water tower that it could be increasing capacity in the future? Like the pedestal part of it, so you could put a bigger top on it or anything like that?
Heard of that. I've never heard of that, anybody doing that.
I haven't either, but, I know, our area itself seems like it's a potential major growth area, because we don't have a lot down there yet, and it should be a shame if we had an explosion of growth and suddenly our 250,000, that's the only thing in that pressure zone is not good enough anymore.
I think I'm on the record saying we took down a perfectly good tower at the fairgrounds to put a bigger one up, so, you know, hindsight's always 20/20. If we would have put a tower years ago, you know, I don't know when that tower went up in the 60s or whatever, we in theory would have just painted that tower, but we put a bigger tower up, so. I want to think about that sizing of the tower a little, where I run some numbers, and we can look at the planning and growth a little bit.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want us to put up something that's obviously way oversized, but again, if it's undersized and, you know, less than 10 years down the road, we're like, oh, we're getting close again.
Again, total, total water in there, it's equivalent population of 14,000, so, you know, you could argue that the other way, well, it's not, you know, overbuilt, right? I think that was a conversation we had at the fairgrounds of, let's build it to the south, and that's a huge savings that we had, but to your point, generally, it's incrementally more cost-effective to build it a little bit bigger for future growth.
Well, the-
You can't overbuild, because you could have stagnant water and-
Yeah.
Even though, even though our water towers have capacity, you said the total combined would be 14,000 population?
Yes.
But, we still, that's not going to have the pressure that we want for the south zone, right? That's only going to be that one tower.
Yep, that would be the entire city.
So, yeah, we could do the whole city at a 14,000 population, but not at the south-side water pressure.
Yeah, so that, to your point, if that's why we want to size the south water tower appropriately, so it can serve the south zone, the south zone's going to help the north zone more than the north zone's going to help.
Yeah, exactly, which is why it would make more sense to have a bigger one in the south than-
Other than you'd be using more electricity to pump it there, so it's kind of-
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. I mean, that exhausts my questions.
And then coming with the sizing of the tower, I think that's, you know, to your point, sizing in that tower, you know, we can talk at a staff level, too, what that growth is, you know, because some of that east was going to be commercial, industrial, and if, again, if there's a heavy water user, then that's a potential problem, or going to be a consideration, you know, as we move forward.
You know, I'm always concerned with the difference between the efficiency of it versus the cost. I mean, so one of those things, when we did when we built that tower in the fairgrounds was we, we actually did two pricings. You know, we priced out the larger tower, we priced out the smaller one, because we asked you to, and I appreciate that, and maybe that's something we could take a look at doing, too, and see if there's a good balance between, okay, well, it's a million dollars more than, okay, maybe we'll build the 250, or if it's only $200,000 more or something like that, maybe it's worth getting 450 or something like that, you know?
I agree.
So, okay.
Can they make those towers at any capacity, or is it 255, 750, or is it-
Yeah, there are certain sizes, and don't ask what size, I reckon, look at that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we could look at some a little bigger ones?
Yeah, because it was a 600,000, I think it was 650, $650,000 savings to go from 750 to 500 at the fairgrounds, so it was more than what I, we were expecting, but maybe 10.250 up to 500 is probably not that same jump, it's probably less than that, because it's less massive.
Sure.
So, yeah, we could look at that.
So, we could see a comparison of the two of them.
Yeah, so maybe if we're good moving forward with the project, obviously we have some time, we'll look at the sizing of the tower, look at population growth, put that, you know, on Ian's plate for what growths in that area, look at the comp plan, and then say, if there's a heavy water user, what does that look like? And then, look at all, essentially, what Tim's talking about is alternate in the final bid documents to say, tower size A or tower size B, use quotes for both, tower companies aren't going to care, it's not going to change really their scope, other than how much steel they buy, and then we can have a future conversation.
Okay, so is everybody good with the direction of option, the one for the tower and then two, or I'm sorry, three for the, what'd you call it, the booster station versus hooking in the well?
Yeah.
Does that make sense to everybody? Booster station of that, so direct, continue with that with two options for the size of the tower.
Yep. Good.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Trail grant.
Can we consider a motion to approve that?
Oh, okay.
You do have to accept the feasibility report and move forward with the letter.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve. Thank you, Dan, do you have a second?
I have a second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number two?
Yeah, two's good news. Dean, our trail grant back in, I think it was March, council authorized staff submitting a trail grant for a couple of trail connections in our community. We were awarded 250,000 for that grant today, so that's coming through in those, that project consisted of two areas. One is a trail up in Parkview in northwest to continue where that trail's now stubbed into that park area there, run that north up to kind of the current north end of the city, along that drainage way, and then we worked with Bigelow Homes to ultimately have them perpetuate that trail to the north, and then eventually to the east where 16 Street ends now along the county road there. So, that's kind of filling in that gap as, as we grow, so that's the first part of the project. The second one was down in south of town in the area we were just discussing, and that's to go to the entrance to Windsor Court in the Park and Ride to extend that trail over to Highway 14. We built some pedestrian facilities, we did south Manorville Avenue, and then we've had a long-term discussion about getting the trail underneath Highway 14, so it's kind of helping close that gap, and then helping our citizens in Windsor Court, that's a pretty good-sized mobile home community there, to get to Highway 14 there with the idea that we'd extend that in the future and work with MNDOT on that. So, that's what we received, 250,000, it goes against a $380,000 project, and we were talking about 25 construction. We don't technically have to build it in 25, but it might be a good year to slip it into one of our larger street paving jobs, but take council's direction on that. And then, I just do want to note that we had letters of support from Bigelow Homes, ALS, that owns Windsor Court, Dodge County, the board members did a letter of support there, the EDA, and then KM School, so obviously thank them for support, for helping our projects along, because we've done a lot of teaming with those groups, so it's great to see some more money coming to town to build some more trails and provide some more connections for us, so.
Thank you. Thanks for getting that. Any questions for Brandon on that?
Good news.
Thanks, Brandon, appreciate it. Anything else for general updates or?
No, other than I guess I did have on here, we also secured 14,000 for sealing some of the wells at, at the fire, I don't know if we even brought that to council or not, but staff put that together and got the signed stuff from Public Works, so we're going to submit that to get some reimbursement for well sealing, so MDH has a pretty good program available, so we took advantage of it.
Perfect, thanks again. All right, thanks, Brandon. Personnel, number one, utility building specialist hiring, let's see here. Okay, one. Get this to open here really quick. Oops.